Welcome to the March 10 Oshkosh Council Meeting. Call the meeting to order, would you please call the roll? Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mookerauer?
Here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Paschal?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Herman?
Paul Mary?
Here.
Present six.
Next, we're going to have Councilmember Allison Osby say a few words regarding one of our residents, our citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. Lerton, a blasting game, game, it was something truly amazing to this community. Lerton and his beautiful wife Carolyn came to our community in 1967. Lerton is a true gem. He was quite the outdoorsman enjoying fishing and hunting. He accomplished much during his career at UW Oshkosh. He was very involved in our community. He served on the Oshkosh Plan Commission for 23 years. I believe 15 of those, I believe he served as the chair. He served on the Oshkosh River Beautification Committee, the Fox River Development Committee, our Sustainability Advisory Committee, Parks Committee on Aging, and the list goes on and on. We could probably spend an entire workshop or council meeting talking about all of the contributions that Lerton made on various boards and commissions, not only in Oshkosh, but in our region. Lerton was no doubt many times the smartest person in the room, yet had the ability to make every single person feel like they were essential and truly mattered. His volunteerism in the city and his contribution to the lives of others around him will be missed. We lost a great person in this community, but haven't gained another angel. Maybe perhaps we could take a moment of silence for Lerton.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next we'll have the invocation led by Councilmember Mookerauer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather tonight, we are grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of all whom we govern.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have something for you. Come on back up. So, Cody, your certificate, and if you'd just like to turn around and tell everyone your name, the school you attend, and what your favorite subject is.
I go to Washington Elementary, and my name is Cody, and my favorite subject is reading.
Thank you.
I go to Washington Elementary, and I'm Mariana, and my favorite subject is math.
Well, thank you so much for leading us in the pledge, and you can either stay for the rest of this meeting, or go home and do homework. All right. Next, we have a proclamation. Next, we have a proclamation for the Girl Scouts. Could our Girl Scout troop join us up front? Whereas, March 12, 2020, marks the 108th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America, founded by Juliette Gordon Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of courage, confidence, and character. And whereas girls discover, connect, and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place, whereas more than 3.5 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 108 years of this American tradition, with over 60 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore I, Lori Palmieri, Mayor of the City of Oshkosh, and also a former Girl Scout, do hereby proclaim the period of March 8 through March 14, 2020, as Girl Scout Week in the City of Oshkosh, and do hereby applaud the commitment Girl scouting has made to support the leadership development of girls nationwide. Thank you so much for joining us. I'll just pass this on to the rest of council. So next, we have the first opportunity for citizen's statements to council. Jake, you got me? Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh and the common council, and may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. Angie, do we have anyone registered for the first citizen comments?
Yes, we do. Cheryl Hansen, 1545 Arboretum Drive.
I provided you with the packet of material for your information. My name is Cheryl Hansen. I am working with the nonpartisan group Wisconsin United to amend (Oshkosh). Our goal is to get a referendum on the November ballot, essentially asking the council to pass a resolution, asking for a constitutional amendment which would clarify that corporations, unions, and nonprofits are not people as defined under the U.S. Constitution, and that the act of spending money is not a form of speech. This would allow regulations in political spending and could require disclosure of donors in super PACs. I've given, I've provided for you a number of things in your packet. As you are probably quite aware, the Citizens United 2010 ruling has totally changed our landscape. You'll see on this packet that after that 2010 ruling, political spending not included by political parties skyrocketed to the point where in 2012, it was a trillion dollars. You also have a flyer that our state organization has put out. Some of the information is a little outdated, but you can, this is the flyer here, I'm sorry. Our email address and Facebook page are on the back if you're interested in contacting us. You also have a big million-dollar bill, and on the back of that is some explanation of where we are today and what we're hoping the community would be willing to do. And those two items are the two things that we will be handing out to the community, especially when we start getting, collecting signatures, which we plan to do on primary day. You have a copy of the proposed petition and resolution. If you're interested, we have had some publication. This is the Oshkosh Herald, page six, on February 19, a very nice article. And also, the Advanced Titan, published an article, front page actually, on February 27. And both of these are also online. You can go to their websites and see those articles online. Let's see. To update you, 146 communities in Wisconsin have passed this referendum, this resolution. Seventeen more communities in northern Wisconsin will be voting on it in April. Eight hundred plus have voted on it nationwide. Twenty states have already passed the resolution. So, as I've advised, we're going to start collecting signatures on April 7. I've been working some with the city clerk, and today I stopped at the police department to let them know that what we are doing. We will be outside polling locations on public property and where private property owners give us permission. I have a couple articles, but I didn't make copies of that for you, but this one is in the, was in The Atlantic a year ago, and it gives a history of how we wound up, where we are, which is pretty interesting. The other one is a current article that was in The Statesman, written by an economist, and it really addresses some of the problems we have today because of the huge amount of political spending.
Ms. Hansen, if I could just ask you to wrap up, we're getting towards that five minutes.
This is it. I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry I didn't time this. Our only confusion is who owns the Alberta Kimball Auditorium? Because no one seems to know, and there's, that's a big polling site, and I don't know if the school board owns it, or if the city owns it. So I don't know if it's public property or privately owned. So, you can send me an email, it's on the back of the flyer, and if you know that, let me know.
I'll let you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Angie, do we have anyone else registered for citizen's statements?
Yep. Jim Ponzer, 402 Baldwin Avenue.
I am he, and the reason I came here is to make a comment that has to do with the busing. I've heard that it's for some kids, not other kids. I ask the common council to consider having all the bus free of charge. It's a service, like sanitation, you pay for it, you use it. We pay for the fire department, we don't all use it, but we pay for it. Thinking that maybe that'll solve this problem of private school versus public school. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
No one else is registered.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consent agenda items, and following the consent agenda, we'll go into pending ordinances. Do we have anyone registered on consent agenda?
No one is registered.
All right. Thank you. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All right. Seeing none, can we please take the roll?
Mookerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right. Thank you. Next is pending ordinance 20-99, adopt state clean indoor air law and regulate electronic smoking devices. Is there anyone registered to speak on 20-99?
Michael Dix, 15 West Murdock Avenue.
Michael, could you come forward up here to the podium?
All right. Hello, my name is Michael Dix. I represent A to Z Tobacco and Vapor, as well as A to Z Vapor, two businesses located here in Oshkosh. First, I would like to begin by saying thank you for taking the time to hear us. A to Z Tobacco and Vapor opened over five years ago during a time of recession. We were featured in a news article about businesses that were returning to Oshkosh in a time when Main Street was littered with empty storefronts. We have since opened three other locations, including a second location here in Oshkosh. Now, I could go into statistics on vaping and go on and on about the constant misinformation about vaping, but this boils down to keeping two businesses open in this town. We at A to Z understand the desire to keep vaping out of public areas, for no other reason than as a courtesy to others around us. What we would ask is an exemption for vapor stores. Being able to vape in the store is an integral part of doing our jobs. If a customer comes in and their vaporizer isn't working, we often need to test the device to ensure that it's working properly. Many of our customers are new to vaping, and we need to teach them how to use the devices properly and safely, including how to properly use the device. Demonstrating the devices in the store is critical to customer safety and properly using their new products. We cater to adult smokers and vapors. The people who come into our locations are already users of these products, or of the products that we offer. Being allowed to vape in our shops does not expose customers to anything that they are not, that they are not already using on a daily basis. We hire employees that use the products because it's necessary for them to be able to sell the products. If they don't vape, they can't assist customers on how to pick products, how to use them, how to fix them. Our, excuse me, our employees also sample new products coming in so that they can understand them better and are more able to assist our customers. One of today's big concerns is teen vaping. We train our employees to be diligent in IDing our customers. Both of our locations have been secret shopped multiple times, and we have passed all of our checks every time. As soon as we were informed of the federal increase from 18 to 21, we immediately changed the policy to 21 up and up, even when locations like QuickTrip continue to sell to 18-year-olds. As an industry, vaping has been pressed very hard by regulations, especially over the last few months, from the loss of customers when the smoking age was changed from 18 to 21, to the ban of pre-filled pods, and the amount of inventory we had to remove from our shelves with no way to recoup the losses. Sorry. To the amount of hours and days spent submitting ingredient listings of our juices to the FDA, we have had to shoulder considerable costs. Banning vaping in vapor stores would be a crushing blow to our two businesses here in Oshkosh. Other cities like Appleton have accepted an exemption for vapor stores, with the understanding that vaping is what our guests are there for in the first place. If we are unable to properly educate our customers when they come in, then they will have no reason to visit our shops. This will lead to them going elsewhere for their vapor supplies, be that locations in other cities, or ordering online where they will receive no training or education. In either event, the revenue is now taken out of Oshkosh. Vaping is under attack in the U.S. while places like the UK are putting vape shops in hospitals to help patients quit smoking. According to the CDC, 480,000 people die from smoking each year. Currently, the only vaping-related deaths have been attributed to illicit THC cartridges, not nicotine vaporizers. In the meantime, according to the National Institute on Alcohol, 88,000 people die each year from alcohol-related causes. People ages 12 to 20, excuse me, make up 11% of the alcohol consumed in the U.S., and more than 90% of that alcohol is consumed in the form of binge drinking. The CDC also estimates that 4,358 people under the age of 21 die each year from alcohol-related causes. While vaping is attacked for its flavors, nothing is being done about the flavored alcohols like Pucker, which is a line of alcohol with Jolly Rancher flavors. While we do not want our youth vaping, the point is, we have been targeted as an industry. While the blind eye has turned to other, a blind eye has turned to other industries. All we are asking is to give us an exemption for our stores so that we may continue to stay in business and provide our adult customers with education and products for product safety, including the risks. Driving us out of business will only lead to a black market and people using products without proper training on the product usage. This will only lead to more problems than it will fix. On behalf of all of our customers and all of those that we employ at A to Z, we ask that you consider an exemption for us, and we thank you again for your willingness to hear us out.
Thank you, sir. Angie, do we have anyone else registered to speak?
No one else is registered. Oh, I apologize. Eric Smolnick, 1855 Hickory Lane.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, I got in under the wire. So, my name's Eric Smolnick, and I'm a family physician and addiction medicine physician who practices here in Oshkosh. And I'd like to just come in a, in support of the Clean Air Act legislation as it stands. I do not believe that exemptions would make any sense at this point. And one of the big reasons that I feel that this is an important thing and an important step for Oshkosh is really this whole youth vaping issue. Looking at the state of Wisconsin statistics, about 20% of our youth in high school throughout the state currently vape. About a third, one in every three, youth have vaped in sometime in their lifetime, and most people who vape now are saying that they started vaping before the age of 16. Also, looking at some other states and looking at other places, what it seemed is, although there are good vape shops that are out there, the loophole would also prevent, present an opportunity for people who were not as good at regulating things to open this up. A Massachusetts study looked at, from 2019, looked at students who were vaping and said that one in six of them actually got their vape products from the vape shops, a specialty vape shop, not from QuickTrip, not from their friends. So I think that this exempting vape shops particularly, but exempting any types of things from this indoor ban would present an opportunity for a safe vape, for youth vaping. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
No one. Thank you.
All right. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This one's actually for City Attorney Lawrence, and I meant to ask it ahead of time, and I apologize I didn't. So we have our current indoor smoking ban that we have.
We do not have a current indoor smoking ban.
That's a state?
It's a state statute, yeah, that we do not currently adopt by local ordinance.
Thank you for the clarification. Under that, within, within that, are smoke shops, tobacco stores, allowed to use their product inside those establishments under the state ordinance currently?
No. There's a very limited exception in the law for like cigar bar type of things that would have been in existence when that was adopted in state law, and I don't recall the year off the top of my head, but it was a while ago.
Thank you. That's all I have.
So if I could just kind of clarify that again, so there's the state indoor Clean Air Act, which we would be adopting by this ordinance?
Correct.
Because we don't currently have that in place for indoor public spaces, enclosed spaces, otherwise. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? So we are not talking about exemptions at this point. We are only talking about adopting this as a blanket ordinance to adapt the indoor, the Wisconsin indoor.
The ordinance would adopt the Indoor Clean Air Act and would also include electronic devices and heating devices under that same provision. So any place you wouldn't be able to smoke a cigarette, you're not going to be able to use a vaping device either.
All right. Thank you. So if we can please call the roll on ordinance 20-99.
Mookerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried six.
Thank you. Moving on to new resolutions, the first of which is approve the sustainability plan update, or an update to the sustainability plan. Do we have anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
Okay. Back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Do we have anyone registered, we don't have anyone registered to speak. Do we have anyone here from Sustainability Advisory Board? If you would, in case anybody has questions. This is a pretty labor-intensive update, a year in the making, I believe, or more than a year in the making. Just a couple of questions, name and address and...
I'm Margie Davy, 885 Fortside Court, Oshkosh, and I am the Chair of the Sustainability Board.
Thank you. So this has been over a year in the making. Can you just maybe, how long would you say it's been, the work that's been done on this for the update?
For the update? We began the update in 2017, which would have been five years after its original adoption by the council. We found out an update is a little more intensive than we had anticipated, and it was completed by the Sustainability Board, I want to say probably September of 2019, somewhere around there, and is now coming to the council. It's a long process.
Do you want to just share a couple of the highlights?
Everything in here is so important.
The highlights of the updates, I should say.
Oh. I honestly couldn't tell you at this point which are the updates and which has been in there. What we did was, we went through the entire thing, all 10 chapters, with a fine-toothed comb. The entire Sustainability Board was involved, and we did ask for some outside help too. For example, the Health Department chose to weigh in on it, which we were grateful. They caught things that we wouldn't have realized otherwise. And we updated everything to the point where we turned it over. The problem with sustainability, or the plus, and you can go either way, is that technology is moving so fast with things like alternative energy, car chargers, cars, that it's hard to keep up. So it's very much a work in progress. Because it's on a five-year update plan, it will be due again in two years. So we have, we're already, we should already be working on the next update.
Excellent. Councilmember Crowsey, who's also the council liaison for sustainability?
I just wanted to add that the council and the city should be very grateful to the Sustainability Advisory Board. Every meeting we had, we had a workshop afterwards to focus on this, line by line, chapter by chapter. We had many speakers come in to help us out with it. It was very labor-intensive, so appreciate everybody's hard work on this.
Thank you, Jake. We appreciate you coming to our workshops, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mookerauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ms. Davy, as well as Sustainability Advisory Board, thank you for the hard work. It was a arduous process, it was very long. It's never easy to get something that good on paper, so appreciate you guys taking, taking the time and the effort, putting it into it, and putting together a good, a good plan. One little thing I actually had caught when I was reading through the minutes of when you guys presented this, I think it was the Plan Commission for their approval, I liked an answer you gave to a question. You were asked how you envisioned the plan being used once it was approved, and part of your answer, that you'd be happy to just get people from each board and department together once a year to discuss what they're doing with sustainability. State would really like to know about all the things going on in the city and how they could help earlier in the process. I think that's a, that was a fantastic answer, and I'd love to see that as well.
Thank you.
Just being a part of the process, and you know, whether it's just decisions made in City Hall, and it's, you know, maintenance staff, you know, public works and some of the things they do, but that's how you make improvements. That's how you start becoming a cleaner and greener city and just a better place to live. So I appreciated that answer a lot.
Thanks. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Mookerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Palmieri?
Aye.
Carried six.
So next, we have Resolution 20-101, Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Oshkosh, Wisconsin, expressing concern over possible federal action to deport Hmong and Lao residents. And do we have, I believe we have several individuals, if you could, if you have registered to speak on this item, if you could move towards the side over here and start to line up. Who do we have first registered to speak on this item?
Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood, and next is Mary Bakken.
So if you hear your name called, line up behind the next person, please. Thank you.
Deb Martin, 164 Wildwood. I was horrified when I heard about this federal ruling, or discussion about doing this. I'm old enough that I remember the Vietnam War from my perspective, always on the news, the newspaper front page for years, and on television and other reports. I cannot believe, if any of us know any Vietnam veterans, we should have a talk with them if we have any doubts about this. They, the Hmong people put their own lives at risk, their families, their homes, everything to help military there, U.S. military people. Whether the war is good or not doesn't matter. It was that they were a friend to the United States for years, and I want to be a friend to the people in our community now. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms., was it Bakken?
Yes.
And who's next?
Mary Ellen Bakken.
No, I'm sorry. Eric Zhong, 3470 Ixta is next.
Excuse me.
No, go ahead. Go ahead. Sorry.
And I am camouflaged as a retiree. That is my position in the community, and my story is really personal. My cousin and her husband were involved with a foreign exchange program through the high school and sponsored many foreign students, including two, a brother and a sister from Vietnam. Being here in America and then returning to their homeland put them in jeopardy. Being here in America and then returning to their homeland put them in jeopardy, and they knew exactly what would be happening to them. So they were airlifted out, they came to Camp Pendleton in Southern California, and my cousin wrote me a letter and said, "Mary, you live in San Clemente, please go visit them at Camp Pendleton." I did, because I could, because for three days, security was being established, but there weren't any policies yet. So we got to meet each other, they were able to be affirmed that Oshkosh, Wisconsin still cared about them, and they wanted, you know, I asked them what they wanted, they wanted pizza, because they were so Americanized, that that was what they desired. So during those three days, we were able to get them a pizza and a rose, which looked like a diamond in the desert of Camp Pendleton. And years later, son expressed her gratitude to me for the rose more than the pizza, because it was, it was just color where there was, there was none. It was joy where there was none. They were sponsored by a family in Mission VAO, which was close to San Clemente, and after that, responced by a family in Oshkosh, and they got back here. And from here, they went on to school at the University of Wisconsin in Madison. So I'm just here definitely in support of the Hmong community because I have close ties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Zong, 14, 3470 Ixted Road, and then next is Maya Yua Tao.
Good evening, it's council member. My name is Eric Zong. On behalf of the Hmong community in Oshkosh, I'm here to share our concern about the possible deportation of the Hmong and Laos who are non-citizens and have standing orders of deportation against them. I want to remind Americans that we are not immigrants, but political refugees. More than 40 years ago, we fought alongside the United States during the Vietnam War, risking our own life to save thousands of American soldiers from 1961 to 1975. Without the choice, we have to leave our country behind and relocate it to the United States. Many years have passed, and we have already integrated into the American society. To go through, to go through with this deportation would not only break up family, but it would be extremely difficult for those indivi, for this individual due to the fact that they do not know the language, culture, or society. So we urge those with the political power to stand and support our Hmong community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maya Yua Tao, 5310 North Rosemary Drive, Appleton, and next is Molly Smeltnick.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Council. Good evening, everyone. My name is Maya Yua Tao, I'm a council member of City of Appleton. I'm here to speak today to support the resolution. I also wanted to thank Mr. Ja Ming Xiong, the owner of business of Club 52 and Golden Ocean Food in Oshkosh here, to help me organize the Hmong community here to come tonight to support this resolution. Hmong is an ethnic group lived in northern Laos during the Vietnam War. Hmong are Americans' greatest allies. Laos became a communist country in 1975. Since 1975, the communist regime began to persecute, kill every Hmong and family members. Hmong in the United States are documented war refugees who came to the US legally with permanent residence, alien status. According to the Census 2010, there are more than 2,000 Hmong living in Oshkosh. The first family arrived here in the 80s. This year marked 45 years anniversary that many Hmong will celebrate across the nations. Hmong people have became economic impact in the community that they lived. According to the Census 2010, 43% of the Hmong workforce have a job in Wisconsin manufacturing. For 45 years, our Hmong community have became your teachers, your doctors, business owners, your elected officials, and other professions in your community. They have contribute to the community by bringing their cultures, life, food, and family here. I wanted to share with you a personal story. My family came and here, we freed our country, and I was three years old, and we walked through the jungle, and we were with many other families. And during the night, everyone had to be quiet, and I was really good until that night, and I did not listen to my dad and my mom, and I started crying, and everyone said, "You have to do something to your daughter. It's either your daughter or all of us would get killed, so you had to make that choice." So my dad did not want to give me opium to go to sleep so I can be quiet and other, everyone could be safe, because soldier will be everywhere hunting people down, because they knew that after 1975, the Hmong people will start freeing the country. So my dad decided to suffocate me, and I passed out. The good thing was that he did not choose to leave me behind, he carried me on, and I don't know how long, my mom just told me the story that later I woke up, and here I am today, and I'm a, I was a student here at UW Oshkosh from 1996 to 2001 with my undergrads, and I got my master's in 2009 here at UW Oshkosh. I was a resident here for six years. I wanted to also tell you that my children now have all American names, and I believe that many young children here tonight, listening to this story, and want us as elected officials, as leaders in this community, to pass this resolution to protect their families, their loved ones. They are Americans now, they have American names. We assimilate to your culture, we bring our culture here to make this community a great place to live. I also wanted to let you know that the Hmong community here and the leaders here would like you to pass this resolution to help protect the deportations of families. We'd like you to also be doing this as part of the other cities that already passed this resolution in those cities, like the City of Madison, City of Wausau, Madison School Boards, San Perry School Board, Milwaukee Public School, and the City of Eau Claire. Tonight, the Autogami County Resolution is on the floor. Last night, our City of Appleton, the Finance Committee approved the resolution, so next week it will go into council.
Alda Person Tao, if I could just ask you for one moment, Council, would we like to allow Alda Person Tao an extra time? We're at five minutes.
Sure.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. So we are asking for you to approve the resolution and to stand against deportation. I would like to see our government, elected officials, and legislators working together to solve these issues. This issue will tear family apart, it will cause trouble to our families, and it will affect our community overall, and then our leaders have to, it would be an issue for us as leaders to help and solve these issues within our community. Thank you for your time, and please vote to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly Smeltnick?
And then next we have Mi Yang.
Mi Yang, okay.
My name is Molly Smeltnick, and I live here in Oshkosh. I'm an immigration attorney who spends much of my time working to lift up immigrants and while educating the larger community about immigration law and the impact that the law and related policy decisions have on people's real lives, people that live right here in Oshkosh. I could give you an hour or day-long talk about the details of immigration law. I could go into details on policies, priorities, and history, and how we got to where we are with immigration being such a hot-button issue. I could explain why it would be that someone who has been in this country for a long time may not have their citizenship or may have been ordered deported without even knowing it. I could go into detail about the sadness and the terrible things that happen, especially when political refugees in particular are sent back to their home country. I could go into how the consequences for bad decisions we all may or may not make throughout our lives vary greatly depending on our immigration status. These are the realities of our current immigration system. And yes, it is true, immigration laws are made and enforced at the federal level, but that doesn't mean that local governments and communities are off the hook. Quite the opposite, it's at the local level where immigrants gather their sense of worth, their feeling of belonging, their sense of community, their feeling of home. It is also at the local level where immigrants rent apartments, buy homes, grow businesses, build products and goods, teach students, and care for the ill. The list goes on. So it is at the local level where we, as members of the community, as leaders of the community, and as representatives of the community, where we can help foster the feeling of belonging, or quite the opposite, make members of our community feel like the other and feel unwelcome in Oshkosh. Local leaders of various political persuasions and at all levels of government have embraced this opportunity in the past, with events, initiatives, with resolutions that recognize challenges as well as offer support to specific groups and their cultures. Local leaders can easily and unwittingly make policy decisions that on their face don't impact an immigrant's sense of belonging, but that will forever make them feel unwelcome. I can give you specific current examples of that happening here in Oshkosh, but no matter the intention or the perpetrator, the harm from that cannot be undone. On the opposite end of things, local leaders can deliberately take action that explicitly tells immigrants and refugees, members of our community, that we support them and value them. You have an opportunity to take such action tonight by passing the resolution expressing concern over possible federal action to deport Hmong and Lao residents. Will passing this resolution prevent anyone from being deported? Probably not. Will it express support for Hmong and Laotian members of our community who are specifically asking for this support? Yes, it will. Will it help them feel valued, that we have their backs? Yes. Does it foster trust in the government when we are asking people to complete the census and bring federal funding back to our local committee? Yes, it will. This resolution is not the City Council stepping into federal immigration law. Civic leaders have a long, nonpartisan history of standing with the Hmong in our community. This resolution is about the City Council rightfully showing its support for members of our community. This resolution is about recognizing that the Hmong have called the United States their country, as we all saw earlier tonight when they all stood up as a group and said the pledge with us, and as Oshkosh has been their home for over 40 years. You have a chance to remind them that Oshkosh welcomes them and appreciates them. I strongly encourage you to vote in favor of Resolution 20-101.
Thank you. Mi Yang?
Mayor, may I ask for more than five minutes, please?
Is everybody okay with this?
Sure.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor, our friends, board members, the association members and non-members in the audience for your support today. My name is Mi Yang, I reside at 2825 Prairie Wood Drive, Oshkosh. I represent the Hmong Service Center as the Board President. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Hmong Service Center in support of the Oshkosh Common Council's proposed resolution addressing the concerns of any federal deportation policy on the Hmong and Lao residents. I had submitted a support statement in advance with the hope that it would help you each understand the situation better as you make your decision tonight. After 45 years, there are still people wondering why the Hmong are here in the United States, with their knowledge and skills of survival in the jungles and the mountains of Laos. The United States CIA, Central Intelligence Agency, recruited the Hmong from 1964 to 1973 to fight a secret war in Laos, defending their homeland from being taken over by the communist North Vietnam and rescuing American pilots who were shot down on enemy territory. The United States offered to protect the Hmong. After nine years, some 30,000 Hmong died as a result of this secret war. The Hmong paid a high price for ally with the United States, as they became the target of persecution after the United States pulled out and Laos fell to the hands of the communist North Vietnam. Unlike some other groups, the Hmong had no choice but to leave their homeland or die. I want to briefly share with you tonight some of my personal experience. I was born in Laos and was old enough to remember my village, the place that I lived for so many years, the beautiful mountains we once called home for many generations. I remember how hundreds and thousands of our fathers and big brothers were taken away and never to be seen again. I remember the hardship of having to leave everything we ever had behind except for small bags of clothes on our backs. There were so many stories of the long journey on foot across the thick jungles, mountains, and rivers to escape death, resulted in hundreds and thousands died of hunger, gunshot wounds or drowning in the Macon River, sometimes an entire family. These experiences the Hmong had endured and the difficulties of life in the refugee camps in Thailand for so many years became nightmares and scars forever in the hearts of the Hmong people. Those who survived resettled legally under refugee programs as early as 1975 to several countries around the world, including the United States. In June of 1980, the City of Oshkosh became home to the first Hmong family. Today, the City of Oshkosh is home to approximately 200 Hmong families, making it the largest minority group in this area. I have lived in the City of Oshkosh for over three decades and have witnessed the changing lives of the Hmong community in this area. I raised a beautiful family here, I went to school and graduated here, I started a business here, I worked and paid taxes, and I learned to become a better person, self-sufficient, and contribute my time back to the community. The Hmong had no written language until the early 1950s. In 40 years, between 1975 and 2005, the Hmong went from one doctorate in the world to over 700 Hmong doctorates in the United States alone. Hundreds and thousands of young Hmong men and women received their college degrees, entered professional workforces, and started their own business. A high percentage of Hmong families have become homeowners in Wisconsin and other states. Similar to any prior immigrants who came to this country in search of a place to call home, the Hmong are here for the same reason, find a safe place they can call home. They have called the United States their new home for the last 45 years. They worked hard to give a better life for their children, if not for themselves. They could finally sleep without being afraid. The Hmong risked their lives to help the United States many, many years ago, which a lot of you don't know. All they ask today is for a safe place they can call home for themselves and for their children and future generations. Returning any Hmong or Lao residents to Laos is sending him or her to be tortured and killed. It is very important that the Oshkosh Common Council passes this resolution to support the Hmong and Lao community by recognizing the impact and risk any federal deportation policy in action may have on the Hmong and Lao residents in the City of Oshkosh as well as throughout the country. Your decision tonight will make a difference for many, many families and many Hmong children in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, do we have anyone else registered to speak on this item?
No one else is registered.
All right, so we will bring that back to council for motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure who the appropriate person is to ask, if it's maybe one of the speakers, maybe perhaps one of the attorneys or, you know, somebody from staff or even council, so that the public, you know, is educated. What are the primary reasons that there ran into issues regarding those that didn't receive citizenship?
Ms. Yang, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, I can respond to that. There are several issues. One of the primary reasons was because of language barrier. A lot of people had problems obtaining their citizenship because of the test. The other one is people who are...
The other one is people who are my age, they escaped from Laos when they were like five, six, or seven years old. And when they became an adolescent in this country, they may not understand life in this country as well, and they behave in a different way where they got into trouble. Once they get in trouble, once or twice, they are denied citizenship.
And I guess I would follow up that question by, so a number of these individuals may have actually served some kind of sentence here in the United States for...
Anyone who had any crimes in the past, they had served their time just like anyone else in the country.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer for you?
I believe so. And my understanding is that, to Ms. Yang's point, is that the time was served. So it's not as if there's perhaps those that have committed a crime that have not served their time. Is that correct?
Other person, Tom?
We are working with Freedom, Inc. in Madison. They're an organization that have helped the Vietnamese community and Cambodian community that has already been deported. So what this, that's coming up, that's geared to our Hmong community is that anyone that are already in custody of ICE, that would be detained, that would be deported, and then the people that had a criminal background that they are, they may already served their time already, that they don't have a green card. They cannot apply for a green card because they have, has committed some kind of crime already that they can't apply for green card, so.
Okay. And so basically what this potentially is, is to allow more time between the Hmong communities and, I guess, policymakers in order to give more time to sort through this, correct?
At this time, as we saw on news that Congresswoman McCollin have wrote a bill at the congress level to give like six years for our Hmong to go back and work on their cases. So with this resolution tonight, as other cities that we are working with, we want our cities to stand against deportation, like for example, like Wausau and Madison, they have passed a resolution. So this resolution is to stand, it's not going to stop deportation, but it's going to, you will be submitting this to the higher level of legislators like the Congress or the White House or President Trump administration, that we, as the city of Oshkosh, protect, and we do not want deportation of our Hmong and Lao community.
Attorney Smelick, did you want to come forward? Meanwhile, councilmember Miller?
Well, thank you, mayor. First of all, let me apologize to everybody in the room for whatever knucklehead, got you guys, knucklehead politician got you guys all worked up and scared like this. It's terrible. I can remember as a kid, my mom raising money through our church to sponsor families here back in the early 80s. So let me apologize on behalf of whatever knucklehead got you guys worked up. I did reach out to Senator Johnson's office and ask for some facts and figures. And Molly, thank you for coming up here. I think you're very eloquent. But as far as I understand it, there were less than six Laotians deported nationwide last year. Is that accurate?
That is a similar number to what I've saw, yes. Or from the last couple, yeah.
So are we, is there a large slate of people being, how did we get here, I guess, where this political pandering and this fear grabbing is going on?
I can't tell you exactly how we got here because there is a lot of politicalization to it. I will say that in the past, the U.S. has not actually had removal agreements with these countries in Southeast Asia, with Laos, with Cambodia, with Vietnam even, I believe. That is what the current presidential administration is pursuing to change, to say, "You will accept our deportees back." So it does increase the risk because part of the reason likely that there have been low numbers of deportations to those countries because there has not been an agreement to allow those people back home or back to that country, that I wouldn't, I shouldn't be calling their home because it has never been their home.
Sure. So there is nothing that has legally changed federally or anything else that we're all speculating in this room right now? Is that accurate?
What has legally changed is that the Trump administration is pursuing agreements with these countries and is directly saying that. And the executive branch always has the discretion on how they enforce immigration laws, and this is how, part one of many ways, they are choosing currently to enforce it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I was just going to clarify on another reason on citizenship of why people may not have gotten it. There is zero requirement that a person who has a green card pursue citizenship. I know a number of people who have just merely chosen to maintain their green card status, and they mentioned a number of the reasons for language barriers, money, but that doesn't mean that there's no legal requirement that a person becomes a U.S. citizen. They can, they could keep their green card status. The biggest unfortunate part of that is if you do not pursue your citizenship, it does make you more susceptible to deportation.
Thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby?
Sure. And mayor, is there anyone else that would like to speak, as I'm happy to let someone else speak as well?
Councilmembers, anyone?
Go ahead. Okay. So this is more of a comment on a personal level. My brother, my oldest brother fought in Vietnam, and he passed away in 2011 as a direct result of being in the war. He was frontline and died of a cancer that is directly caused from Agent Orange. So while my brother had some significant and horrific mental health issues, PTSD, you name it, you know, there were times that he certainly talked about his experience. Most of it came from some of the caseworkers that he worked with. But the one thing, as traumatic and I think is the experience is that I think your families experienced and many of the families that didn't get out is certainly my brother spoke incredibly high of the Hmong community. He was separated at one point from his unit, and I do believe there were families that did help out. I certainly know of pilots and others, when you talk about the secret war, you know, that went on. While it's not talked about a lot, I do truly believe that it does exist. And, you know, a person's word is a word. And what I would say to our Hmong community is that, you know, we agreed as the United States, in order to have essentially your support, was that we would provide a home here in the U.S. So regardless of what is said or what comes of what the federal government says, in my eyes, you are welcome here. You will always be welcomed here. And if that's what we committed to 40-some years ago, we should be honoring that on a personal level.
I just would like to thank all of you for coming out this evening and for your courage and for sharing your very personal stories. And I thank you for your time very much. Before we go to this vote, is there any last discussion? All right, please take the roll.
Mugarar?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Palmary?
Aye.
Carried six.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Resolution 20-102. Approved Determination of Necessity and Approved Budget Amendment. Authorize Redevelopment Authority to Acquire 706 South Main Street. Is there anyone registered to speak on Resolution 20-102?
No one is registered.
All right, back to council for motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second.
Yeah, we'll just pause for just a moment here to allow the room to be cleared. We have a lot of people who came. Thank you.
She got it already.
Discussion. Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. Yesterday was March 9th. The RDA met correctly, correct?
Yes.
Can you provide us the outcome of their discussion and related to how they felt about this action that we might take today?
Yes, the RDA met yesterday at 4 o'clock. They approved the, their resolution to acquire the property, 6-0. The conversation revolved largely around, is this the right price based on other purchases that we've made in the area and what are our plans for the future? I did highlight that this is part of the redevelopment district. The city council and the RDA adopted back in 2003, and we've been acquiring parcels in that South Shore redevelopment area, in this area specifically, since then. We first acquired railroad tracks and tore out rails. We tore out some of the property that was blighted. The reason you create a redevelopment district is you've decided all those properties are blighted, and as time has gone by, we've acquired properties surrounding this property in question. And I, we prepared a question the RDA had was how much did we spend up to this point acquiring those properties? And some of those old parcels that are the Miles Kimball Building between 8th and 9th, rec lanes and the pro shop right beside 706, which is the question tonight, 43 East 7th, we acquired a few years ago, and decades, we managed to acquire that property back in 2019. So you can see, we've spent over a decade acquiring properties, and we've acquired vacant land. That's usually at the lowest rate, but when we've acquired properties, especially with businesses, they've been at the higher end of the per-square-foot cost. In this particular case, the rec lanes and the pro shop came in at $31 a square foot, and the acquisition that's being offered by the owner right now, that would come in at about $32.83 a square foot. So it's a little higher, but it's in line with what we paid in the past for buildings that have been occupied recently and could be occupied. Right now, it's vacant, and the city's goal is always to acquire a vacant property to avoid any other potential costs. The RDA has acquired all these properties and planned to do an RFP. And if you recall that process we have, council and the RDA have to approve it, but then the RDA has to put together an RFP to solicit bids. We did that about a year and a half ago when we didn't own these properties, and we got no responses, largely because we didn't have control over the properties that are in this redevelopment area. So we've acquired the last remnant of the Pioneer Drive from CN. We've acquired the decade property, and this is the last piece that we would need to acquire for the redevelopment of this site. And we expect to issue a new RFP once we finish the demolition. We have a demolition contractor that's been hired earlier this year. Actually, it was December. They started work here this year, and they've paused right now just based on the weather, but they'll be back on site soon. And if we would acquire this property, we wouldn't have to rebid. We could do a change order. They wouldn't have to remobilize. I expect we'd get very good cost savings in the demolition of this property so that when we offer this property up for redevelopment later this spring, we'd have a clean site, and then we'd get, we'd remove the uncertainty that all the proposers identified back a year and a half ago. We've removed those as barriers.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, mayor. Alan, bottom line, are the taxpayers overpaying for this property?
I think we're getting a bargain, actually, based on our previous history with acquisition in that area and how long it would take to acquire properties. It's taken 17 years up to this point. It could be another 20 years before we have another opportunity, and then we're sitting on that $3 million of investment and not getting any return. The sooner we can get a return on this, assuming we acquire this property, similar to Marion Road, then we're going to be talking about values that get up to 50 to 75 to over $100 a square foot. And that's the kind of values we really need in the city, not 5, 10, or even $30 values.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Peschall?
Sure. So I think all of us have kind of heard the masses of Oshkosh kind of ask the question that the property that's in question was assessed at roughly $240,000, but we're paying roughly $900,000 for that, or we might be, depending on how we go tonight. Explain how we get from $243,000 assessed value to a purchase price of $900,000?
Basically, we're, the owner is offering the property at that price. We don't, in the past, all the other properties were offered to the city. In this particular case, Mr. Dumkey is asking the city to reimburse him for the cost that he incurred for acquiring the property and the deal that he had with the preceding business. So as I said, he's, we're just basically covering his costs. There's no profit there, and the city has the potential to benefit in multiples beyond what we have already invested then in this property. If we're at $3 or $4 million, I'm expecting we're going to become somewhere around $30 to $40 million of value, and that's the kind of return I would expect for that property based on Marion Road's experience.
So in essence, the property itself has a greater market value than it does the assessed value, which is based on what's existing there at the moment?
Correct. Good way to put it.
Other council discussion? All right, please take the roll.
Mugarar?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peschall?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Mayor Palmary?
Aye.
Carried six.
All right, on to council discussion. Direction to city manager, future agenda items. Looks like we've got a couple of workshops. City manager, want to review those?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the workshop on the website changes as our next meeting, March 24th at 5:00 p.m. That's really, for lack of a better term, it's optional. It's for council members to meet with our information technology staff. I would encourage you to bring whatever favorite device you have that you use to access the website or any, and we can certainly set you up with a laptop if you've heard concerns from residents that you may want to address some of those things. We want to identify what some of the concerns you have and how we can better improve the website, and that'll start at 5 o'clock. Regarding the workshop for the Department of Corrections, excuse me, Chief Smith and I had an opportunity to finally meet with the Department of Corrections folks this morning. So I was unable to provide you with any update until today. I think we're all set for March 31st. I have not invited our legislators as of today because I wanted to confirm we were going to be okay. I know one of the things that I heard loud and clear from the council members as well as residents, is they wanted to hear from Trinity. I think Chief Smith and I made a compelling case to the Department of Corrections that Trinity needs to be there, and we explained why, and I think the Department of Corrections folks understood. We want to have a broad view of what's going on there, not just isolated issues. And I assured them, we're not there to trap Trinity or anything. We just want them to hear the concerns and explain how they're managing the site. And I think we made some headway with the Department of Corrections, and I think they'll be able to encourage Trinity to come. There's no obligation that they have, but I would say the Department of Corrections didn't have any obligation to come to the meeting, but they gladly said they would be here. They're going to send several individuals, as a matter of fact, to be there. So I'm encouraged by that. I'm working on an agenda to send to them. We discussed an agenda, but essentially, it's covering all the different elements that go into this, whether it's local issues such as zoning and police, to the Department of Corrections, Trinity's management, as well as just sort of the overlying issues regarding location of recently released former inmates. So I think we'll have a good outline. Once I get that outline finalized with the Department of Corrections, I will forward it to council, and my goal would be to do that within the week, not the weekend before, but just give you a rough idea of what's going on. I... I read into discussion that council had that even though we normally do not have public input at workshops, that you would desire that. And so it would be my, and I informed the Department of Corrections and I expected that the council would permit public input. So, and I assured them, it's not to attack, it's to express concerns and that. And that'll be a balance there that you'll have to achieve, but I think there's some value and I think the Department of Corrections understands that to have a workshop and not give the public a chance to talk would be cheating the whole process out of giving good input. So they're ready for it and they're very open to inviting public input, which I thought was a good step forward. So that's the basic agenda. We will put out invitations. I'll let the residents know. A couple of residents have already emailed me. I didn't want to commit to anything until I was able to report to council. So we'll have that at March 31st. Unless there's any questions, my real question for council is when would you like it to start? I think we're going to need a good two hours. I'm just being honest with you and, you know, I think council's going to want to hear from the public and you're going to want to ask questions and there are going to be presentations. So I would budget at least two hours. So I welcome your input on when you would think a good starting time would be for that.
First, can I just like clarify then? So you're working on a draft agenda for the workshop, which you'll send to council first for review before you connect with DOC? Or are you thinking of letting us know after the fact?
I will let you know after the fact because the Department of Commerce is here by agreement and I think the discussion we had was it's appropriate for us to have them understand that the conditions, the outline of that, so we're as upfront with them as possible for, in exchange for their voluntary commitment to come to the event.
So then is it your thought that if council members have specific questions that they would like to add to that mix, that they would submit it to you before you forward that draft?
Part of the agenda was going to include a council question and answer.
Okay.
So I don't think you necessarily have to. If you want to, that's a great idea and I'd be happy to pass them along, but I think council has, you know, every right to ask questions. If they, if you got them in advance, great. If not, if it comes to, some of these questions are going to come to mind after you hear the presentation, so I don't want council to be limited. It was just more by mutual agreement, we said we would agree to an agenda so that they know that there's no surprises. But questions from council aren't necessarily surprises, but if you've got anything you want me to pass on, absolutely let me know. But we've got a general outline that I think will help us a great deal.
Councilmember Allison Osby, you look like maybe you wanted to add something there.
Yes and no, Mayor. I guess what I was processing as Mr. Roloff was speaking is that I think what we all need to keep in mind, not only on council, but of course, you know, with public input, is again, the participation with the DOC as well as Trinitine is voluntary. And so I think we need to be mindful of that because again, if we would like to have a working partnership, we need to conduct ourselves in a manner that's going to foster a positive outcome.
I guess my only question is, refresh my memory, are we only speaking to this specific situation at the workshop or are we having a workshop about transitional living at a general level?
I would say we are talking about both.
Okay.
Talking, I think it's appropriate and I think we mutually agreed that you had to have a discussion about both. Certainly, the residents are going to want to hear about 1105 Jefferson, but I think we as a community, because, you know, this is, you know, we heard, and you know, chief's here, we heard a lot about, you know, sort of where they see, you know, things going statewide on this issue. And I learned a lot today in terms of, you know, what's some of the rules and regulations that they're under. And, you know, I think it's super valuable for you to hear a lot of the things that I heard today and for the residents as well, to understand the limitations, but also understand the responsibilities that go with when you agree to run one of these facilities. You have certain responsibilities and at a minimum, certain courtesies to the residents in the immediate area. Chief, anything else or does that pretty much cover it?
I think it covered it.
All right. I just, if I could bounce back to the workshop for the 24th on the website changes, just wanted to invite the public to email council or staff or call us if you have specific comments on website revisions. Mr. Roloff, I believe we might have had a handful of emails over the last year since our new, or our latest revisions that gave some specific input. Do you have recollection of that?
And a lot of those were dealing with the email capabilities, particularly emails to council. So we are aware of some of those. So I think part of it is hearing from council because, and I think, you know, I think Mr. Newman needs to hear that too, so we can pinpoint specific issues. So, and what I will do and appreciate the feedback there, we'll start through social media and we'll start the process through social media and the city manager reports show to solicit questions that we might be able to solicit from the public prior to that as well.
Probably be great to hear what things you like about the website too, the new version. I'm appreciating the mobile friendly version and then frustrated with some of that too, so.
Well, that's why, bring your favorite devices, you know, so that you can have a chance to do that.
All right.
And then just time for the meeting on the 31st. You know, I think Mr. Mugarar has an opinion.
No, I just want to make sure we touched on that before we departed.
I'm sorry, I thought you said two hours. You're looking for the hour that we meet, of course.
Yeah, the hour that we start, yes.
Thank you.
No worries. No, I was, 5 to 7 was the suggestion and we typically start most of our workshops at 5:00 if council has that ability. I know sometimes earlier is tricky for some of us. Just wanted, didn't want to maybe start at 6:00 and go way past 8:00 either, so 5 to 7:00 seemed reasonable-ish.
Observation that you may have some residents that may not get off work till 4:30, 5:00. You know, sometimes it's tough for council members that are, you know, doing their daily shift, so that's just an observation. Certainly, public input would likely be later on after presentation, so it's not like at the council meeting where it's right up front or, and right at the end, but, so just balance that out. Earlier for staff, certainly better. The chief and I don't mind having a 5:00 meeting.
Recommendations? 5 to 7?
5 to 7, yeah.
All right, 5 to 7.
Very good. Thank you.
Next, we have discussion of ordinance to ban conversion therapy. Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. I think everyone received a letter from the Winnebago County Health Department with their packet, just kind of the health department's view on conversion therapy as it relates to youth and persons in general. So I'm not going to sit up here and talk about the process of what conversion therapy is. I think that's your job to do that homework and to figure that out. I want more of direction of where are we going with this. So last year, we had had a discuss, I had brought this up for discussion and at the time, I was kind of told that we were waiting to have this as an issue for the Diversity and Inclusion Committee as maybe being the first issue that this committee would take up. We're now several months further and we don't necessarily have a full update of where that is and such, and so I'm kind of looking for that direction in regards to the creation of that committee. Otherwise, I would also like to seek direction about moving forward with creating an ordinance or a resolution that would support the ban or create a ban. So bringing it as a courtesy back to the council because we did talk about it and wanted to provide the council to provide any feedback or updates on their thoughts and opinions related to this.
Councilmember Mugarar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I appreciate Councilmember Peschel bringing this to our, back to our attention. You are right that, you know, we haven't had a diversity and inclusion committee created and there's no charge there yet for them to take that up. And so to continue the discussion, at least within the community, is a good thing. But I worry that introducing it here is just more of a symbolic gesture than an actionable item, only because we have no enforcement capability within our purview. As we do not have a health department, this seems to fall under something the health department may, the county health department, excuse me, may have a more appropriate role in policing, if you want to use that term. It just seems as though it would, it may give false hope if we did something like this without, you know, full county backing, without a health department that's, you know, fully on board and has already put something on their books as well. And I say that with, with, I lost my train of thought a little bit, but basically, if you want to even apply the word therapy, that's an extremely liberal definition for this particular process that some people choose to apply to others. It's a horrendous process and it should not ever happen. Personally, just, it's a ridiculous thing to even attempt, but I just don't think that it's something that falls within our purview at the city level.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm sorry. No, you're good.
Thank you. When this came up for discussion, I think, was it September of last year? I was under assumption we'd get something rolling with the Inclusion Committee sooner and seeing nothing happening and nothing in the foreseeable future, I would fully support an ordinance coming up for discussion. And I think if I could ask Chief Smith the question on the ordinance. Thank you. So if we would pass an ordinance similar to other cities, we don't have a health department, but the fines or whatever we would call it, would they be enforceable by our police department if there would be an investigation into the crime? If it was a crime?
Councilmember Crowsey, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I believe City Attorney Lawrenson would like to address that.
If you don't mind, I'll jump in.
Sorry, Chief.
We'll do this together.
Sorry.
Sure. One of your options that if you do look at an ordinance, and we've seen it with a couple of other communities, is, you know, on a complaint, the department would do an initial review and then the remedy, rather than being a forfeiture, is referring it to either the health department or to the DSPS, the State of Wisconsin Department that reviews licensing for counselors and such, and letting them know you've got a complaint, there may be an issue to follow up on, and then letting them, because they have more expertise in the area, do that review back rather than having the police try and figure out, you know, these issues in terms of treatment or medical, you know, mental health issues, confidentiality. Having our office, it would be referred off to, you know, those departments, department or departments that might have a better ability to deal with that than our departments do.
Yeah, and our ability to investigate that would be very limited based upon many of the, many of the points that the city attorneys brought up regarding confidentiality for licensed counselors, medical professionals. And essentially, in my limited research on it, it takes a lot of effort to actually find somebody who's actually doing this and you're able to prove that out in order to even bring it before, even to bring it for a court for any type of action.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. I got to be honest, I've been on the fence on this one for a long time, but after getting the letter from the, from the county health department and then listening to this conversation, I don't think we're equipped to handle something like this. And I guess the second part of my question is, is there somebody like this, you know, doing this crazy stuff here in town or do we have anybody doing this within the city limits or has anybody complained about this?
We have not received any complaints related to this.
Okay, all right. I guess my opinion is, I think based on my letter from the county, I think they're the ones that are best handled for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Peschel.
Sure. So Councilmember Miller, I want to address your last question. So I think the challenge of this issue is that there is no structure or a base or a foundation for those that feel that this practice has been committed against them in the community and that there's a basis for something to be done about it. I and other council members on this council have met with individuals in the community who have expressed to us that this activity is taking place in our community. And some of it exists through, you can go to those persons and their websites. They don't necessarily practice out of business structures. They may practice out of their homes. They may practice under the guise of religion as well. And so, so it's creating the comfortability for a community to express that something like this is taking place, not only against kids, but also adults that may be in that questioning phase or were, or maybe not anymore. And so this is not something that I would bring up to the council or to our staff if it wasn't something that I feel that people in the community had not had this done to them. So this is not a willy-nilly action.
And if I can just quickly respond and then Councilmember Allison Osby. So earlier this evening, you know, we passed a resolution regarding the Clean Indoor Air Act. You know, we're interested in the health, welfare and safety of our general public and, you know, this is a health impact and a safety impact. I believe that it would be worth having this go forward and you're absolutely right. The Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee discussion has not come back as there are still pieces of that that are being worked on. I don't want to give a specific date because city manager and I are continuing those structured drafts, right, for that. So certainly, I think the conversation could come back, but if there are people who are experiencing that, receiving this so-called treatment that is harmful, is it your understanding that those are typically youth?
Yes. This is, this is a practice that has been communicated to me through the, through several youth in the community, so. And I think that that actually expresses more the uncomfortability of being able to come forward and express that as well.
You mean to the police department?
To the police department or even outwardly in the community as well.
Okay. All right. Just wanted to ask that. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, I guess a couple of thoughts is, you know, I don't think anybody at any point is suggesting that, you know, perhaps that bringing up the topic is willy-nilly. I have not gotten any indication from any council member, including Mr. Herman, who's not here this evening, that anybody thinks that the practice is acceptable. I think, you know, when it comes to the, you know, what we approved earlier, that is driven by the state. And so, you know, I think that's a little bit different perhaps than currently what we're talking about. You know, what I see is potentially an enforcement or logistical, more of an enforcement nightmare. A couple of things is, you know, at the city level, we don't regulate over minors. You know, only parents have that ability. You know, if there is something here and somebody does it in Nina or Fond du Lac or Winnicott, Amro, you know, they're going to do that, not that that is, that's right. You know, I think the biggest thing which was alluded to just a moment ago was that, I believe somebody had mentioned, and I don't know, that it may not necessarily be a business. You know, it could be under the protection of religion or it could be somebody who has designated themselves or the family has designated. And how do you enforce that? Because if they're not technically a business, like for example, what we passed earlier, how do we even, how do we even control that or regulate that? And then what kind of position are we putting, you know, our staff through OPD through when it's something that truly they can't regulate? And that's kind of my question where it goes back to, you know, with the Winnebago County Board of Health, you know, I also have to assume that, you know, if it's severe enough, there must be at some point where that may cross over into the line of abuse, you know, and then is And then is that more appropriate for family services? Am I saying it correctly? Where they address, you know, neglect, abuse, things like that, health and family services. So those are just, I think, nuggets that maybe, you know, we should consider when we're looking at it. So, you know, to, to Mr. Muggerhour's point, Mr. Peschall, I think, I think it's great that you brought it up, because again, if it is indeed going on in our community, we should be aware of it. Again, I've not heard one, one person on this dais that's, that's endorsed it at all. But I do think maybe this is in the realm of, of maybe a different entity.
So what would you like to see happen? Councilmember Peschall?
I guess I would, I would, I would prefer to have an update on the diversity and inclusion, maybe at the next council meeting, as in regards to the direction of this, because I feel that this isn't, this is an issue that I would like to be able to move forward with and to bring it to our council to, to make a decision on. But I, I do want to, I do want to acknowledge that the original element was meant for it to become up, to come up through a committee. And my concern with that is depending on how long that takes, I may not wait that long, because I'm, I've already begun to prepare an ordinance to, to bring to, to this. So, part of my, my struggle that I've had is that I, I was prepared to bring this as an ordinance, and I was asked to bring it back to you guys, guys and gals, as a council, because we had originally talked about it. But I do not feel that any council member should be held back because of possible inaction on the whole council's part to do something. We've always been told that any council member can bring forward a resolution or an ordinance. How we do that is important in giving staff the time to be able to research that and to properly vet it and to do all that. And I am prepared to provide that time in doing that, but I'm also prepared to work with this through a committee, if that's the direction that, that we have a foundation for.
Well, I guess, I, I'd just like to say that I, you know, respectfully, I don't know that I recall us saying that when we move forward with that makeup and structure of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, that this was going to be first on the list. So I would.
Part of, part of the potential.
It was part of the, a potential realm of topics that that entity could take up. So, I, I would say, don't wait on that.
Yeah, and that's, and that's, that's actually kind of where I'm, I'm at at this point, I think, is, you know, we've been told that we can author resolutions. We've done it, two of us did it tonight, and we can author ordinances, and the council has the ability to vote them up or down.
Okay. City Manag-
So, yeah.
City Manager?
Just a point of clarification, I, I absolutely agree with Councilmember Peschall on the resolution, but the ordinance, any ordinance is totally different. An ordinance has the force of law, and to any ordinance, such as the vaping ordinance, and I know several council members were, you know, on staff and, you know, on us to get it done, we have to make sure any ordinance we bring forward has been properly researched and everything. So, and that's, that takes significant amount of staff time. For an ordinance, and I haven't been given direction to let any ordinance on the agenda, any resolution, absolutely. That's why with the ones we had on the agenda tonight, but the example of the smoking, the vaping ordinance, that took two and a half, three months for the city attorney's office to get it on. It would have been on a little earlier because of the, the computer virus, but other than that, it took roughly three months. And I wouldn't want to promise an ordinance that, because it has the force of law, it may involve some, it could involve litigation. Resolutions don't involve any litigation, and any council member that wants to work on it, I, I assisted the mayor and Councilmember Peschall on, on the among and loud deportation resolution, because that's something that's policy for council. We, we put it together relatively easy. I assembled it, provided it to them, they gave feedback, and the final version was, was really a reflection of you. But staff, I'm, I'm very comfortable with that, because that's a policy issue. But in terms of ordinances, I, I hesitate to say, yeah, we'll put any ordinance on the agenda, because it has to get vetted through the legal process.
But if I could just ask another question, sorry to jump ahead, guys here, but if we're talking about banning conversion therapy as a business practice is one thing, and that's a separate issue from if there is like some form of extreme physical or other abuse to a child, that's already a law. So are we, just to clarify, Mr. Peschall, are you, are you talking about banning conversion therapy as a business? Or are you talking about something that may already be addressable through other means?
I, I think the path that I had been taking was related to the commercial act of it, so the, the business practice of it, the business element of it, so.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
I'll hold my comments too.
Okay. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Yeah, so I think that was kind of my question, which I think we've kind of addressed a little bit, is, you know, with it be, you know, potentially an ordinance, you know, the, the force of law. And so, you know, I guess, you know, my, my other question would be too, is that because of, and, you know, we all know that the amount of work and staff time that goes into it, you know, did we at any point in time as a council agree that we were going to have staff invest time and effort, which could be months of effort? And I don't know that we ever gave that clear direction that staff would be, would be working on that. So that's where I'm a, I'm a little bit confused, because I know we talked about it. But I thought typically, when it does come to things that do require a substantial amount of work and making sure that we are in compliance with the law, that, that would be a clear, clear majority council direction.
Can I, can I allow Jake to go first?
Yeah, let's, let's, Councilmember Crowsey.
Thank you. Kind of a two-parter. The first part, with the laws in the books pertaining to physical abuse of children, I mean, mental abuse is probably just as bad. I mean, there's clear studies out there, right in Mr. Peschall's thing that he had sent out by the health department, that the suicide rates are much higher when this therapy is applied to children. Sometimes we may not hear about things going on in the city, because children don't have a voice in the city a lot of times. And then the other question I was going to have, pretty sure I know the answer already, but if you have clear council direction to create or take an ordinance, and if you want to vet it, you can, but it can be vetted after it passes by litigation, whatever. But if we give you clear direction by a council majority, are you going to bring that ordinance up? Is that, is that council's direction, is it an authority?
Yeah, if council gives a direction on those types of things, we'll certainly do that. We'll point out, and I think the city attorney will, will point out concerns, but we'll bring it, we'll bring it forward. That's, that's not the issue.
Okay.
All right. Back to Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. So I guess it, it kind of comes back to the direction that, that this council wants to take, and I, I don't see, and I, I think Mark usually does this job where he kind of says, I'm not so sure that I see a clear direction here at this point.
I figured I didn't need to say that tonight, so.
So, you know, and I, I think, I, I think that I'm not going to stop on this. So I, I think that it's something that I think is important, and I might provide a little bit more information as we go a little bit further. One thing I did want to say, Mr. Roloff, was I thought there was another document that I asked for you to put in with the packet, but it didn't make it in. And it actually relates to the comment that Councilmember Crowsey related to in relation to a report on the mental health aspects of conversion therapy, and also the, the level of addiction that's also related to that, to that group of individuals as well that, that struggles with that. So.
I apologize. I was out of the office the latter part of the week, and I thought Diane forwarded that. I knew it wasn't in the agenda packet, so I apologize. I, I thought you already had it, so. And Diane's come on this week, so.
Yeah, so if we could just make sure that we get that distributed out, maybe with Friday's packet.
Who did that come from?
It came from, you mean the email that it came from or the, the agency?
The agency, yeah.
Subs, it's SAM.
SAMSA?
SAMSA, yeah. Substance abuse, mental, I'm sorry, I don't know the whole acronym.
SAMSA, I'll find it. Thank you.
SAMSA will lead you to it. So, and you, you also have a PDF of it in your email.
Councilmember Crowsey.
Oh, one final thought that I have. I mean, I wish Mr. Herman was here tonight, because I'd love for him to weigh in on this. It's an important issue. But just a thought, we could ask council's direction tonight, see where everybody stands, and if it doesn't, if it's not a thing we can bring up for ordinance right now, maybe we can bring it up next month again. So just, you know, let people be on record tonight, how they support the issue.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Jake. Jake, I agree, and I can, I, I guess after hearing everybody's input tonight, that, I think we all agree this is a horrific thing. But I also think that this city, the police department, our, our attorneys are ill-equipped to enforce this. I think we're wasting everybody's time. After receiving that letter from the county, I, I think they're the perfect entity to do this. So, I, we all know me, I'm not about red tape and political garbage, so I, I would say, don't. We are, we are not equipped for this. That's, that's my position. So, thank you.
I guess my question, as it relates to that, earlier we passed, again, going back to the vaping ordinance, you know, are we any less equipped to enforce that ordinance, that, you know, vaping not take place in vape shops? It's a rhetorical question, but I, I think that's something to, to think about, is, you know, by the time someone actually calls law enforcement, that this has been, is, is there a realistic ability to enforce, you know, some of the other business-related things that we have passed?
Just a thought. Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, to, I hadn't planned on it, but to, to your last question, I know it was rhetorical, but yes, we are less equipped to address this issue than vaping. I think it's pretty clear-cut that we're less equipped. Just my own opinion, but I think it's, it's pretty clear. I don't mean to put Councilmember Peschall on, on point, but he has brought this topic up, and I think it's, it's okay for me to ask him. You know, has, especially with a few of us expressing some concern that we're, we're not equipped to properly, I don't want to use the word police, but properly police this in the, in the public or in, within our domain here. You know, have you had any discussions with county health department and/or any friends or any supervisors on the county board in terms of them addressing this at their level? Since it, it really does seem like it is more under their purview.
Well, I think it's clear that I've, I've had conversations with the county health department, and if they had the ability to enforce any action towards this, it's something that, that they feel is important. So I, I mean, that's, I think that's clear with the letter that they provided. In regards to the county board, I, I have not had any conversation with a county board supervisor recently with this. I know that it was brought up a year and a half ago with the county board, and, and it did not pass, the county board. So, so that's to the extent I've been working within the body that I, that I'm, that I'm, that I try to work within, so.
And I'll just, I'll just say that I did receive an email from a mental health professional who lives in Oshkosh and works in Appleton about this matter. And there was an anonymous letter shared by someone who claims to have experienced this, who then made an attempt on their life as a result of their experience. It's unfortunate that I attempted to, after the subsequent phone, follow-up phone call, was not able to reach that individual to follow up further. But the, the question, I think, kind of come backs, comes back to, Mr. Peschall, I think you may have mentioned, or someone mentioned, that there was a place that this was happening here in Oshkosh. Do we have any way of like verification on that? Do you know? I mean, that can move this conversation further? I believe somebody may have showed me a website.
Sure. There, it was shared to me with a person's website that lives in town and practices out of their home, this practice, so.
Well, seems like three of us have an interest in taking this further, and we are not so sure. City Manager?
Just trying to help. So, one of the things that Councilmember Peschall asked about was an update on the progress of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. I'm not going to be at the next meeting, but I would be happy to add this to Status of Outstanding Issues, and we do it on April 14th. I'm just trying to help move things along. If, I know you asked about putting that on the agenda, maybe that's how we, we've just moved the ball a little bit on this, because the mayor and I have been working on it on and off, and it's just one of those things that's like, we want to get it done, we just got to work on it.
I think there was an emphasis on working on DEI internally before working on that external focus. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And, and I mean this with all due respect, Mayor, but, you know, just, you know, you just said it, it looks like three of us are interested in helping and three of us are not. I don't think that's the case. You know, none, none of us, I mean, everything that you're saying regarding the mental health, you know, the consequences and the endangerment to mental health, suicide rates and all of those, I don't think anybody disputes that. I think what it is, is that we've got three people that I think are led, and rightfully so, by emotion, and I think you've got three of us that are looking at the practicality, more of kind of the nuts and bolts and the, that. So, you know, I think, because as I'm sitting here, and I would guess that Mr. Miller and Mr. Muggerhour as well are probably all thinking within our head, okay, you know, if this is not, if there's not really something we can do to necessarily enforce whether it happens or doesn't happen, you know, what are things we can do? And is that maybe more of a statement to the county? Is that more of a statement to our state legislatures? Is it, you know, perhaps, you know, you know, something like that, you know, versus putting us in a situation that we can't enforce something and have staff spend months on something that we just can't, we just can't regulate? So, you know, I just want to be cautious of our words, because I think all six of us that are sitting here this evening are incredibly, incredibly saddened and also very concerned about something like that going on in our community.
Councilmember Peschall.
Sure. First off, I want to thank you all for providing your insight and your thoughts and your opinions. They are appreciated. So, I do, I guess I want to end with the reality is that Oshkosh wouldn't be the only city or municipality that's, that's taking this up. There, again, are neighboring communities that have taken it up and it hasn't passed, and then there's neighboring communities that have taken it up and it has passed. They, I want to express that some of them handle it through a committee on health, or some of them do handle it through the regulation of a fine and a distribution of the name of the person who's practicing it to that state, to that state department. That was actually a municipality that, that follows that process, that, that does that. I, I think there's, there's many different ways, depending on the body of government, of where this can be handled. If we choose to take this up and were to successfully pass something of it, the direction would be provided through the vetting of the ordinance, and what works out best and what passes. We're not sitting up here saying, this is how it needs to be implemented. I'm sitting up here saying, let's, let's, let's think about creating an ordinance that can create the teeth of implementation of it. So, and my, my final comment is that there are many different communities around us that are, that are taking this stance, and I recognize this. And I'm not saying that we need to follow all of those, but I, I think that this is important enough to, to youth to, to take a step in that direction towards, looking towards creating some teeth to making this, and banning this practice in our community, so.
So how about this? Because we do have a few other items, and we're not there yet. What about prior to City Manager and a meeting again on our Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission structure, submitting how inclusion commission structure, submitting how, I guess, how you would like to see a committee like that address this issue?
Okay.
As a potential draft? How's, how is that as a way to continue the discussion?
I can work with that.
You can work with that? All right. Great.
And Mayor, as a, as a fun fact, Mr. Peschall and I actually years ago were the only two votes out of seven to actually keep the health department within the city versus merging with the, with the county. So had Mr. Peschall and I been able to persuade our other council members, we probably wouldn't even have this long discussion tonight.
Absolutely.
So way to go, Mr. Peschall.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for the fun fact. I like fun facts.
Fun facts.
All right. So, moving on, we have a second opportunity for citizen statements to council. Do we have anyone left?
No one's registered.
Karen? No? Got nothing? All right. So councilmember announcements and statements. Anxiously awaiting to hear the work of the committee on aging from councilmember Allison Osby.
Yes, and I do realize that we've talked about extensively on a couple of other things, but just wanted to give a quick update. It was, I believe, three years ago that I had come to, came to council and had asked within our budget if we could have $2,500 for a strategic planning session. Mr. Roloff had asked me if, at the point, because I was on the committee prior to that, you know, if, you know, maybe it was one of those committees that we, we didn't need anymore. And, you know, at the time, there was some confusion about that committee and also, you know, which is separate, that deals directly with the senior center, friends of the senior center. But there was just so many phenomenal gems, like Lorton and Claude and Judy Ritchie and a number of others that, you know, I'm failing to mention their name. There was just such intellect there and such a desire to serve the community. I said, let's do a strategic plan, let's see, you know, what we could do. And from that, and over the last couple of years, it has just evolved greatly. We, we used to meet at the senior center, we now meet the first Tuesday of every month from approximately eight to nine, nine fifteen. It is televised. And the group of committee members that have come on, it's just amazing. I sat Tuesday morning and just watched. You know, there's video clips regarding scams at all levels, whether they're local, whether they're, you know, like robo-calls that, you know, try to, to take advantage of our elderly population or our senior population. There's things regarding dementia, you know, things that family members can do, things that are offered within the city. There's so much that this group is offering right now in the form of communication and also partnering with other agencies, some with the county, some nonprofit, bringing them in to speak to talk about services. And so it's become incredibly educational. And I think the most rewarding part of that is to see, you know, our committee is, you know, all, all different age brackets. And then just the feedback from those that are seeing it, you know, when, when they watch, when they watch that committee meeting, the value that they're getting out of it and what they're learning and how it can apply to either themselves or if it's a family member seeing it, how it may apply to a senior family member. So again, you certainly can come in person or it's taped on the first Tuesday morning of every month. So thank you, Mayor.
Great. Just a quick question. What are just some of the kind of overarching themes of that strategic plan that came out of that investment?
I think what it was, and, and this is no, this is not say that any other, you know, existing agency perhaps, you know, isn't doing their work to communicate. But I think, you know, everybody's stretched so thin. And so when you have all these different agencies, it's kind of, what kind of came of it really is that I think the committee on aging is a great conduit for everyone to kind of have that information flow through. That's how I view it. But not only that, but it was just the fact of the participation of not only the members, but we invited others in from the community as well as our department heads to come in during that, those strategic planning sessions to give input as to what each one of them are, were noticing within our aging community.
Thank you. All right. City manager announcements and statements.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Several things in your packet this evening, just want to highlight a few. Regarding the outstanding issues, the city website is in there, that'll probably be gone after next week and depending on, or after the following week, depending on what input we get. The strategic planning, the draft is in, was in your Friday packets. And if you could have any comments, given Mr. Fitzpatrick, the ideas for it to be on the next council agenda for discussion and approval, if it, if it's satisfactory to you. Our goal was to get it to you by the end of the first quarter, so hopefully you'll be satisfied with that. One of the things I will add to the, to the outstanding issues, and probably should have done it months ago, put on the diversity and inclusion committee, probably a good thing to keep on there, to keep the council aware of the progress we're making. The donation report for 2019 is in the council packet. That's required by our code according to our donation policy. So there's variety of donations in there. I would suggest if you have any questions about the donations, direct them to the department to whom it was sent to rather than to finance, because finance will just turn to the department in question. We worked on a cooperative purchase of some pay and display machines for the boat launches. That comes directly out of the boat launch fee, so that's paid for by boaters to benefit boaters. And what we've heard from our colleagues out there is that our revenue increases precipitously as a result of this. So the payback on these machines is significant. And the vandalism is virtually gone because you're no longer putting cash in there. So that, and that's been part of the problem we've had over recent years. So we're real excited to report that on, report that for you. Regarding recovery of the network virus, we're still making progress. Little things we're still working on, for example, the Wi-Fi capabilities of us accessing our network once we go Wi-Fi, wasn't there, whether we were here in the building or left. Those were starting to get added in the last week. I was the first one before I went to my conference, so we're slowly getting any, any mobile unit to make sure that they can access that. So we're going through that. And again, we're, we're, as Mr. Newman reported, we're down to less than 100 separate specialty software. So I said, we're under 100? Yeah, and he was very happy with that statement, but we still have about 100 to go. So we're still working on that. And then there's other little things. Performance is slow while we're slowly getting the system up to speed. So we're working on it. We try to keep it out of the general public eye so it doesn't inconvenience the public. But you will notice some things maybe operating a little slower. It's due to the recovery mode because we want to make sure that we're giving access to people carefully so that we don't expose ourselves to further risk. And I just got an article this morning about Raleigh, North Carolina. So even cities bigger than us get clobbered with this. And so, and the, the list grows weekly. I just happened to see that one this morning. Strategic plan update I've already talked about, state of the city. Appreciate a lot of the feedback. We're going to be doing a debriefing this week. As many of you know, didn't have a chance to announce it last night. Emily Springstroh, our media coordinator, is going to be leaving to stay home. We're going to miss her, but we, before she leaves, we want to pick her brain for any observation she can make about improving the process. Emily puts her heart and soul along with Jake and Scott on Oshkosh Media. So we're going to miss Emily, and I know Jake and Scott will as well. But we're going to debrief her before she leaves us so we can get good feedback. So if you hear anything, or if you have any comments, please share them with me. I got some really good comments already, both good and critical. For the most part, I think most people liked doing the awards first. There was some belief that if, if the awards were done after, that some people kind of trickled out, it kind of kept them there. I think it made it more meaningful for the recipients. So we'll, that's some of the comments. So if you hear anything, just let me know. And then lastly, I'm doing a commercial for the city clerk's office. Just a reminder that two polling places are changed for the April election and really for the rest of this year. The Oshkosh Public Library again is replacing Webster Stanley. And because of the renovations at Whitman Regional Airport, the district at Whitman Regional Airport is being moved to the Hilton Garden Inn. We got a meeting room there that we'll, we'll use for that. Doesn't get a ton of traffic, but we wanted to get something that was reasonably close to the neighborhood. That one is in, is in that district, isn't it?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's all I have, unless there are any questions.
Actually, if I could go back to a question on the donation report, is that a report that gets generated by finance? And if so, maybe, because I don't think our finance director's here, but Mr. Miller, you're at the top of the list on the donation list. And I can't quite tell is the $1,000 iPad and iPhone, is that by Mr. Miller or to Mr. Miller? It's not clear on the format of this.
It's from Mr. Miller, for Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller just wanted to cover his own costs for those things.
Okay. Just wasn't clear at the way it was listed. It's not really.
I do take donations, but thank you, Mayor.
I was going to say, that was a pretty generous opportunity there. But no, if we could just maybe have a little more clear formatting on the, like identification, because it's not clear in, in reading this, who's doing the donation. I would have thought that the last column identified.
Thought those were you.
I'll pass it, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Councilmember Mookarauer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, as you were talking about elections, would the deputy city clerk like to give a little plug for absentee voting or anything like that? So those out in the public know what they need to do if they'd like to do so before that comes?
You can request a ballot by mail. They're being mailed out March 17th. And then March 18th, we start in-office voting. And that runs through April 3rd. And we do have a Saturday, March 28th, nine to noon. So at any time, you can go online, you can call our office, and you can get the absentee by mail.
So Saturday, March, what was that?
March 28th.
That proved to be really popular.
That was.
Recent elections.
Thank you, councilmember Crowsey for initiating that.
It just helps working folks that, you know, can't scramble in here at lunchtime during the week, so.
Or they don't want to haul their kids down to the voting booth.
They still get to haul, they usually haul them on a Saturday, so I wouldn't say that was the advantage.
Hey, there, there are a couple of spaces that are family-friendly if you happen to come to city hall with the little ones and you need to take a little break or timeout with them that are a little more family-friendly. Angie, I did want to ask you, someone had asked me about a sample ballot. They were trying to get copies of the sample ballot, and that wasn't yet available. Do you know when that's?
The ballots are hopefully going to be here Friday.
Okay.
And once they're in, then it gets uploaded to the MyVote.
The MyVote?
And the MyVote's a great tool if you want to request a ballot, too.
MyVote.org, right?
MyVote.Wisconsin.
Dot Wisconsin.gov.
And there's a link from our website, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Well, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're adjourned.